Are we live? Yeah, thank you so much. It's really, really exciting to be here with this man. And I'll try to be proper, but I'm from a different generation, and so I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about the process for a few minutes here. The process is each person who wants to ask a question should have a ticket. Do you have a ticket?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to raise them? Okay, yay! And if you want to ask a question, but you don't yet have a ticket, there'll be people circling around looking for you to give you a ticket. And then I will call out two numbers. It'll be the person who's ready to ask a question, and then the next person. And a staff member will find a microphone for you. And then when the senator is finished answering the questions, I'll call the next two numbers. And in the interest of time, please keep your questions concise. Okay. And we're gonna try to get through lots of questions, right?
Right.
Yes. Now, I'd like to introduce Senator Wyden, which is super exciting to me. We'll do it in a minute. We'll do another round of applause after I explain who he is, which is so fun. All right. When Senator Wyden is in Washington DC, he represents all of us in the Senate and as a member of the Committee on Finance, Budget, Intelligence, and Energy and Natural Resources, which is one that's more near and dear to my heart than others. He's a ranking member of the Senate Finance Committee, and he's the ranking Democrat on the Energy and Natural Resources Committee. And I'm gonna say just a few words right now, the things that I'm grateful that the senator has been working on. So first, making secure and moral schools funding, which I know changes, the name changes all the time, but making it stable and permanent for timber counties on the west coast in Oregon. Working to make banking available to state legal cannabis businesses. Proposing a national vote by mail! And finally, well, actually finally, but this is really exciting to me. I've been noticing a lot of comments trying to hold Facebook and other social media companies accountable. And I really appreciate that as well. But the thing that's really important to me that you've been working on is climate change. And I even pulled out a few quotes here. On the Senate floor, you said to your colleagues, "Climate change affects every single American in one way or another, and we've got to find a way to create a bipartisan path to address its growing harm." And then here in Oregon, Senator Wyden said, "It's up to all of us to take the science that's presented and make sure that our response is one that's rooted in the Oregon way," which Senator Wyden talks a lot about. And that means it's working on what all of us can do in order to find solutions. So that's a quote from this man right here. Isn't that so exciting? And finally, in Oregon, we always know that this is a senator who listens to us. So please join me in giving a big Yamhill County welcome to U.S. Senator Ron Wyden!
Thank you. It's an honor to be in the building. What an inflationary introduction. Let me tell you, I'm gonna make a prediction here. You're not going to have boring county commission meetings with Casey. You know, he said, "Well, maybe Ron's from a different generation." And a lot of people watched those congressional hearings on Facebook and Google and the like. And a couple of people said, "Boy, sure looks like there's a big learning curve back there to get on top of the tech issues." And a couple of the publications said I was one of the most tech-savvy members of Congress. So I was kind of puffed up about myself. And my children started telling their friends about it, and they all just started laughing. So it's just great to be home, great to see Casey's energy and exuberance. Where's our Vice President Anita? Where is she? Is she floating around? Vice President? Above me, I'm a senator. We might need to call her to get the government open. We're gonna start our meeting in just a quick minute. But we got one little bit of business. Where is the inimitable Bob Andrews? Is he here? There he is. Okay. Now, before we start, I just want to talk a little bit about my friend Bob. And some of you probably know a bit about his record. Mayor of Newburgh since 2006. And I would come to Yamhill County for town meetings, and Bob would talk about what was going to be done about the Newburgh-Dundee bypass. As sure as the night follows the day, if Bob is there and an elected official is there, it is going to be essential to talk about the Newburgh-Dundee bypass. I have to tell you, having been on it now, all of the sweat equity, all of the work, all of the elected officials, our Bob Buttonhold for all these years has really paid off. And before we formally acknowledge him, I'd like to hear a grassroots shout-out for Bob Andrews, Mr. Dundee Bypass! Mr. Newburgh-Dundee Bypass. He recently won the Mayor's Leadership Award from the Oregon Mayor's Association. And I'm just gonna tell you, I think that his contributions to making Oregon and Newburgh a better and safer place and being such a class act. You know, everybody talks about how the debate in government has deteriorated. And I'm not gonna talk about who said what to whom. But whenever you talk to Bob, you know you are talking to somebody who is authentic, who is real, who wasn't just gonna say something and then rush out and tweet all kinds of ridiculous things that really weren't said. So one of the things I get to do is I get to take a flag flown over the Capitol and come home and give it to somebody really special. And I'd like Bob Andrews to come on up here so I can give him the flag. And I hope he'll say a word or two.
I'm up in the world here.
Dear friend, the floor is yours with thanks and appreciation for everything you have done for this community. The microphone is yours.
Thank you, Senator. You're not leaving right now, are you? I think the good senator is more perennial than I am. I chose to step down this year. This is my next-to-last activity that I have as mayor. I'll be leaving the office as of Monday. But I am particularly impressed and I'm particularly indebted to the Office of Senator Wyden, our U.S. Senator, for the work that has been done, the collaboration that has been put together that we did. And we do have the first phase of our Newburgh-Dundee bypass, and we are now working collaboratively towards starting the purchase and the planning and construction for the second phase. But I'm gonna reverse the roles here. Would you step over this way, please?
Sure.
My turn. For everything that has been my pleasure of working with you, I want to give you this thank you from the Mayor's Office of Newburgh. Senator, thank you, and good luck in your future.
All right, friend. We'll be in touch.
God bless.
Okay, thank you. He doesn't know it, but I'm probably gonna go to the Ethics Committee and see if I can find a way to make him a dollar-a-year man and just make him keep working. Okay, how many of you have never been to one of our town meetings? It's got a great crowd, a lot of newcomers. Well, I usually talk for about an hour. Everybody thinks it's a lot of fun. And a couple of folks over there think I'm serious. Oh my God, what did I get into? No. That is not what happens at one of our town meetings. One of our town meetings, I'm gonna give no speeches. I won't be using any teleprompters. This is part of the pledge I made to Oregon back when we were choosing our first new senator in 30 years. I said, "If I have the honor to be chosen, we'll throw open the door as a government. I'll go to every county, every year, and people will just make their comments, ask their questions. The floor will be theirs." And that's what the founding fathers had in mind. So we're about to start Town Hall Meeting Number 914 in my time in public service. There are no subjects off limits. Suffice it to say, there were one or two things going on in Washington DC. I suspect some people here are very bothered about some of those. I haven't even heard what happened, all the happenings at the meeting an hour or so ago in Washington. But I at least got a little bit of a sense from the Finance Committee staff what was said. So we've got plenty to talk about, but plenty for you to talk about. And what I'm gonna focus on is listening, and I'll try to do my best to respond. And let's also give Casey a big round of applause. He's gonna call the numbers out. And let's go right to it, Casey. Thank you.
Should we do 183? Let's go with 183. Do you have a 188?
Hi, I'm here from Long Island, Oregon. And frankly, frustrated with what's going on in DC, as everybody else is, I'm sure. I just wonder, is there any possibility of getting the government up and running and on its feet? It feels like we have a House Representative that's going for it, but it has to be passed by you guys, the budget. And is there a chance that we're gonna get anywhere with this thing? I have members of my family that are furloughed right now.
Tell me about the members of your family. People who are already in the lurch and can't pay bills, and they work for the federal government?
Yeah. So I just thought, I was talking to my husband, and it's like, well, if it was closer home and, you know, members of Congress or the Senate were furloughed, you know, maybe something would be done.
Here's my take of where we are, and I'm sure we're gonna talk a lot about this. And one of the reasons I voted not to close the federal government is for exactly what you're talking about. You can't have a double standard where people who have positions in government are comfortable and everybody else is laid off. I didn't want people in the lurch, you know, this way. And we had an overwhelming vote in the Senate, overwhelming vote, to keep the government open. It is a very difficult task to reopen the government when you're dealing with a closed mind. And that's the heart of the problem. So what I said this morning, I had a Listening to the Future session at Cleveland High School in Portland, making my way to the coast and the like, is I said that we have to understand that when you listen to the public, what the public is saying is, "Deal with our agenda first. Make sure that there is a government open and responsive to us. After you've dealt with our agenda, then it's okay to deal with your agenda, which is to have a wall." That's what the president's agenda is about. He wants a wall. Now, I'm opposed to the wall, but what we voted for, what we voted for in the Senate, I thought was respectful of both sides. It said, "We will open up all the government agencies that have been funded in a bipartisan way, and then we will have over a billion dollars for border security. And between now and February 8th, we will have a debate about what to do about what the president wants." So you deal with what Oregon wants first, which is to open up the government, and then you deal with what the president wants next. I continue to believe that's fair. The House essentially voted yesterday to do that. I'm hopeful that members of Congress, who are gonna be home over this weekend, not that many hold Town Hall Meetings, unfortunately, but there'll be a lot home, are going to hear that the American people want the Senate quickly, when everything starts up again on Tuesday next, to take what the House passed and vote it out of the Senate, send it to the president, and he signs it so that we can get on with the next period of discussing what he wishes to discuss, which is the wall. So we'll have to see. I haven't heard about all of the discussion that went on around noon, east coast time. I spent most of the night flying home in order to be here for these town meetings. But we are a country. And I always come back to saying, "Of the people, by the people, for the people." Because it's the question of what is good for the people. And just this week, when I heard about Jim Mattis, the Secretary of Defense, being dismissed or resigned, and the president said he dismissed him, the comment was, "What's he done for me?" And I just said, "That symbolizes the whole thing." The question is, what's being done for everybody in this room? And those workers that are trying to figure out how they're even gonna pay for Christmas presents that they already bought, let alone mortgage payments and everything else? So I wanna make it clear that the reason I voted as I did was to keep us from being in this position. And I think the challenge is reopening the government means that we gotta take people away from this closed mind position. That's my take. Do you wanna follow it up? I think we should have a real discussion about it because this is so enormously important to Oregon and the country. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, if, say, that doesn't happen, and you don't have a, that the president, you know, says no, I'm gonna have a wall regardless. What, I mean, is there any way around?
My view has always been that political change doesn't start in Washington DC. It starts in rooms like this and in coffee shops and churches and places where people gather. And instead of it being trickled down from Washington, it bottoms up. Now, in the last 24 hours, two Republican senators have already said basically what I just said. Let's fund the government, and then let's go ahead and talk about the wall. In fact, one, Cory Gardner, to his credit, said, "I wanna fund the government now, and I happen to be for the wall." So he'll be a vote for the wall. I have a different opinion, but at least it is a way to advance what the country needs. So if enough people in America, and there're gonna be a lot of members of Congress home, I would not like to not be home this weekend because people feel so strongly. If enough people speak out, the way it works in America, thank goodness, is people make it clear to elected officials, "You don't put our interests first. Well, we have this wonderful thing called elections, and we'll end up getting people who do."
Knowing your Senate colleagues, and you just mentioned Cory Gardner, is it feasible that a number of Senate Republicans would coalesce and begin to stop voting lockstep with Mitch McConnell?
I think we're beginning to see more independents. These are not election-nearing kind of discussions, but 40 seats changed hands in the House of Representatives last November, so people are paying attention to the news. Obviously, Mitt Romney is going to have a different viewpoint in the Senate. Already began making comments. Again, I don't wanna say it with response to every sentence, but I continue to believe that men and women of goodwill, when you talk about what it takes to put the country first, will come together. I mean, last session, Orrin Hatch, in the end of his congressional career, 43 years in the Senate, he and I were faced with what to do about millions and millions of kids who had lost coverage through what's called CHIP, the Children's Health Insurance Program. And I said, "Mr. Chairman, we can fix this problem and actually expand the coverage for less money." And I actually showed him the path for doing it. We got that done, and we reauthorized the program for 10 years. It's why you now no longer hear parents panicked about coverage for their children. So again, if people of goodwill and good faith wanna find some common ground, we can do it. And I've tried to make that my biggest priority in my time in public service.
Pre-quieting numbers, 220. We got 220. Can you raise your hand if you see it?
The other part of this wall issue that will be increasingly visible is only a tiny fraction of the money that was actually made available for the wall has been spent for the wall. And this has caused great frustration because in the discussions, it's not been possible to get a straight answer about why that's the case. In other words, you wanna have more money for something else. $5 billion, millions of meals for senior citizens for a whole year. It's a lot of money.
We have 220? All right, how about 199?
Yes. And by the way, I wanna make one point even just as we start. For those who don't agree with me, I'm especially interested in hearing from you. And I want everybody to respect those voices and treat them with the kind of respect that Oregon has always dealt with in these debates. That's the Oregon way. I had a town meeting recently in Corvallis. A guy got up in the beginning and basically said, "You're a bum, you're a laos. I don't agree with you about this and that." And everybody started booing him and hissing him. I said, "No, let's let him speak. This is the Oregon way. Everybody ought to be heard." One, the speaker was very surprised. And B, all the people who've been booing started clapping. So for those who have different views, who support the president on the wall or whatever, I really hope that you will speak out, okay? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Ruth. I'm a retired horticulturist from the nursery industry in Oregon, which is a pretty important...
Very important.
And so I have two questions. One, I think part of the frustration is that nobody seems to be getting through to McConnell.
Getting through to?
McConnell.
McConnell.
That he's got a lot of responsibility to make sure that the person in the White House is doing his job and is reacting and behaving reasonably since there are no other people to bring that idiot in. The other thing, so I'd like to know what... Can we just flood his office with statements saying, "Connell, get your act together and, you know, behave like the person who is supposed to listen to all constituents, not just from his statement because of his situation, his position to all citizens?" Is that what we need to do, just flood his office with that? Will that have any results? And then I have another question.
Go ahead, just ask the other one. I'll deal with both.
The next question is, over the years, I've known any number of children who qualify as DACA folks. And they are without a doubt some of the brainiest young people I've had the fortune to meet. And so are their parents. I would hate to see what happened in one of the last shutdowns, this last February, was it, I think? When DACA was pushed down the road because Democrats said, "Yes, we will be reasonable, and we will be responsible, and we will open the government again, and then we will discuss DACA in March." And nothing happened. And those young folks have been in a state of stress and destress, as well as their parents, for an abysmal amount of time. I wanna make sure that doesn't happen. I'm all for saying, "Open up the government now." I think that's very accurate. As Lee said, we have relatives and friends who are affected by that. But I really don't want DACA to be compromised. And I think we really need to open the borders. And just in case you haven't heard, the fellow in the White House has said that he's fairly entrenched, and if he has to keep the government shut down for months or years, he will do it to get his wall.
Two points. The first is apropos of what I said. Politicians stay entrenched until they see that they are about to face a tidal wave. In other words, if there is a tidal wave coming, and we've seen in the last 24 hours, two Republican senators, you know, moved, then they do not wanna get engulfed in the tidal wave. So, you know, part of this... I mean, we saw the president at the first session. And as you know, he says things on Tuesday that may not be on Thursday in accord with what he said on Tuesday, and then says he didn't say it on Tuesday. So you saw the 17-minute tape of him saying that he was proud to shut down the government in order to get the wall. So this is not like something that people say, "Well, Ron strolled in here and made it up." I mean, everybody can see this. My sense on your first question, and then we'll talk about the second question of DACA, that Mitch McConnell is really juggling here. Normally, he gets in the middle of every one of these issues. You notice that all during the sort of Christmas to New Year thing, he was vanished. Vanished, not a sight or a whiff of Mitch McConnell, nowhere to be found. And once in a while, some press person would emerge to say, "This is for Chuck Schumer, Nancy Pelosi, and Donald Trump," you know, "to work out." Well, he came back for swearing in the start of the new Congress. And I can tell you, a lot of his senators are saying he's gotta get off the sidelines, which I think is also manifested in the Cory Gardner, Susan Collins issue. Now, he is up for election himself. So he is always concerned, as many of the leadership are, about a primary from people who backed Donald Trump. But he also has many of his Republican colleagues who are up in difficult states who he's paying attention to. So to the extent that there can be this kind of grassroots juggernaut, I can tell you who the people are. Tom Tillis of North Carolina, Joni Ernst of Iowa. I mean, we can go through this with you. So if you know someone in North Carolina that you went to school with, or maybe you shared a ham sandwich with nine years ago in summer camp, call them. And same with Joni Ernst. They're probably not going to be super interested in hearing the views of somebody from Newburgh, Oregon. But you can definitely help be part of that juggernaut. So that's the answer to question number one. Question number two, I very much share your view with respect to not using DACA as pawns. And it was actually worse than you said. At one meeting late in that debate, Bernie Sanders, who doesn't agree with Donald Trump very often, got up and said, "I detest the wall. But if we're gonna get something for these DACA kids, I'll vote for a wall funding, and we'll see what happens down the road." So there's been an effort to be very much compromising. But I'm not going to accept. I'll just tell you, me, one of Oregon's United States senators, I will not accept DACA young people being used as pawns now or in the future.
Okay, Casey? Did you get that second count? All right, well, let's go with 214.
Do we got anybody on this side?
Yeah, 214. Are you over here? All right, Megan. And then we'll get 202 after that. Anyone else?
Hello. Hi, my name is Megan. I'm gonna try to do this without waiting the baby up. For the past two years, I have helped organize an invisible group here in Yamhill. We're called Progressive Yamhill. We're called Progressive Yen Hill. We have a little over six hundred members now. My question for you is, with the weight of our six hundred members and the past two years' experience, what would you suggest that we focus on in the coming months? What can we do here?
Well, I think there are two questions. One, of course, is the immediate of getting the government, you know, open. And then the second is beginning to work towards broader reforms. My sense is that the House in particular is going to try to set the ball in motion very quickly. I have been trying for, let's see now, six years to take, as Casey touched on, Oregon's vote-by-mail national. And it looks like the House is going to actually get it started. The House is actually going to get vote-by-mail moving. And if you look at all the voter suppression that went on this past election, and people fighting about whether somebody had the right ID, or they were told that they should have gone here when they should have gone there, you solve all of that with vote-by-mail because everybody gets a ballot in the mail several weeks before it's due. If there are any problems, you can sort it out, the addresses, all of this kind of thing. So there are two parts to the equation. Obviously, we have to deal with the most immediate part. I've already begun the second part. I'm the ranking Democrat on the Finance Committee, which has jurisdiction over about a trillion dollars worth of healthcare spending, Medicare, Medicaid, CHIP I mentioned, the tax credits. I want us to have strong, tough controls on the escalation of prescription drug prices. And I've introduced legislation to do that. And this is an area where there can be some bipartisanship. The new chairman of the committee has worked with me on escalating prescription drug prices. So I am already at work on the agenda. I'm working-- Mentioned, Casey made mention of the privacy, you know, bill. I mean, every week, you find something else Facebook told you that isn't true. And these big companies are just vacuuming up your data. And we say that the big financial companies have got to send a statement to the federal government saying that they have told the truth on their financial statements. I will be proposing that the big technology companies, when they send a statement to the federal government about their privacy policy, if they lie about it, they're going to face real consequences for the first time, including the possibility of jail time. Wait, did you want to follow that up? I think she did.
I applaud all of those things, but what I'm really wondering is, for those of us living here in Yen Hill County, do you suggest that we focus on calling Representative Bonamichi to help with the vote-by-mail in the House? Do you want us to send you emails and phone calls?
Great. There are a variety of ways to go about it. Usually, it starts with your picking a project. We've done a lot, as you know, with Indivisible, that is in line with your members' interests. In other words, my understanding of Indivisible is you all make some judgments together about your priorities, and then you advance them. So if, for example, at the top of your priority list is you would like to work on vote-by-mail, you bet, you can be in touch with Congresswoman Bonamichi and Congressman Blumenauer and say, "Hey, will you work with Ron in terms of drumming up support?" That would be really helpful. And particularly on the voting bills, help us get Republican support, because there used to be Republican support on these kinds of issues. That's why I call it the Oregon Way. The Oregon Way had people like Tom McCall and Mark Hatfield, and by the way, Vera Katz, the late, great mayor of Portland. All of them fought beyond what was in their sort of stark partisan interest. That's what I call the Oregon Way. Somebody stopped me in Fred Meyer and said, "Hey, Ron, where's this Oregon Way written down? Is it like in the State Capitol Building? Is it like in Pioneer Place in Portland? Where do I go to read the Oregon Way?" The Oregon Way is not a document like that. The Oregon Way is what we're talking about here. How do you actually address very real needs? We started this meeting off with this wonderful person in the third row who wasn't interested in scapegoating and all the rest, just wanted to know what was going to be done to get this fixed. And that's why I emphasize kind of the history where-- And by the way, there are a lot of occasions where you can't get the United States Senate to agree to buy a Coca-Cola, let alone on reopening the government. This was something, what I described to you, where both sides of this makes sense, and we're told originally that the Trump administration would be for it. Mr. Pence, Trump administration, would be for it. So that's what we're trying to do here, and that is the Oregon Way, coming together, trying to solve problems. When Indivisible makes its list of priorities, you let us know, and we'll talk to you. Great. We kept the baby asleep through that. That reflects what my wife says, is I may not be the most galvanizing speaker. When we took the twins home from OHSU, all the press was out there, big deal, Ron Wyden, his wife had twins. And they said, "Do you have anything to say?" And I said, "Take a look at the twins, they're already sleeping," like most voters when I talk.
Thank you, Senator Wyden, for giving us an opportunity to speak. Your town hall? My name is Ahmed Kumar. I'm part of Immigration Voice, grassroots advocacy and organization.
I didn't hear the name of the group.
Immigration Voice.
Great.
Yeah, so I represent hundreds of thousands of high school graduates stuck in neckheads now, backlogs called green cards. As per a latest report from the Cato Institute, the current backlog for someone, let's say a graduate of this college, if that person was born in India is under fifty years, one and a half centuries. So this impacts families that might-- I'm here with my two daughters. My younger one came here when she was eleven months old. She's in middle school now, still waiting for a green card just because she was born in India. There was a legislative fix for this problem, and it was called HR 392 in the House that had three hundred thirty cosponsors. The Senate version was S 281, and you were a cosponsor.
I remember well.
And then that eventually had twenty cosponsors. But then-- And this bill was also part of the appropriations package, but then it lapsed with the end of the Congress. So my visitors, we would again like to request your support for a future version.
You will have it. I thought you did an incredibly good job in terms-- And, you know, again, so people are aware, this is not just an immigration issue, it's an economics issue. Initially, I wasn't aware of it. Many people associated with what you're trying to do came to town meetings. I assigned somebody to get on it and became a cosponsor of the legislation within seventy-two hours. So there are ways in which to get governments' attention. And my sense is, right now, the president believes that he still retains support for this proposition that he should have a wall, and everything else is secondary. So it's going to be important for people to weigh in on that, and it's going to be important for them to make the point, and I'll say it now. When people ask me about immigration, I want everybody to understand, I think our country is a better and stronger place because of immigration. Period. Full stop. And unless you're a Native American, folks, odds are overwhelming that you are part of the immigration experience. My father fled the Nazis in the thirties. Not all our family got out. My great uncle Max was one of the last to be gassed in Auschwitz. And all my dad wanted to do was come to this country and talk his way into the army, the R Army, because he knew they wouldn't be much interested in him. He had a lot of health issues, flat feet and all that. And he basically-- My dad was a very persuasive character. He walked in and talked to the military brass, and he goes, "Let me tell you, folks, I can write the propaganda pamphlets. We'll drop them on the Nazis, they're going to give up the second they hit." I have some of them. They are really, to use the parlance-- I'm on the Intelligence Committee. My older child calls it the so-called Intelligence Committee. They are smoking. These are really powerful. And so you can't find much more patriotic roots than you have in the Wyden household, starting with my dad. And my grandparents, to this day, would be flabbergasted, flabbergasted, to hear that their grandson, a first-generation Jewish kid, was a United States senator? Unheard of, unheard of. But that's the dream of America. That's the promise of America. That's the immigrant promise. So I'm with you, my friend. You tell me when you want me to go on the new bill, the new version. You got a lot of friends and neighbors here. It's good for what immigration is supposed to be all about. It'll be very good for the Oregon economy. Put me on it.
And then-- All right, 193 in the bottom here. And then 167 will be the next. 167. Are you 167? All right, I'll keep an eye on you.
Let's make sure we get everybody out there, and the bleachers up there, too.
Yes. I'll pull up the high ones.
Senator Wyden, I'd ask you a very pedestrian question. What is the most effective way for us to communicate with you and other representatives and senators? We get in our mail petitions from Common Cause and Population Growth, and this and that and other things. Are those worth anything?
I'm not convinced petitions do much to drive real awareness of people's feelings and the like. I really pay a lot of attention to these town meetings because I think the more technology we have, the more human contact still counts. And I think phone calls are very important as well, because you get name, place, information, again, that suggests that a real person out there. So those are just my biases. If a member of Congress tells you that they read every letter that comes from home, know that that is untrue. I will tell you, if I was hooked up to my desk in the nation's Capitol, and I was fed intravenously, and I never came home for a town meeting like this, I could not read every letter that came in. But we keep tabs on it, we keep a running count. Couple of times a day, to the incredible dismay of the office staff, I go back and read a few of the letters that come in. Generates a whole lot of hullabaloo. Oh, my God, here he comes.
Email, letters, phone calls to Washington or to the local--
Both, both.
To the local office.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I think, that's what I value. I want to know that there's a real person out there. And with these petitions, you get something with twenty-five thousand signatures, and you have no idea whether anybody even signed their name to it, whether it was all just kind of put together by a bot.
It's nice to see you, Senator Wyden.
You, too.
Thank you for being here. And this is a personal request. There's a legislation that Senator Berkeley has got on board with to recognize the World War II Cadet Nurse Corps that served. And I would request, since my aunt was a part of that, I'm requesting that you find out more about it and support it as well.
Am I not on it now? World War II Nurse Corps?
It's the Cadet Nurse Corps program. We have a hundred and twenty-four women in this country, nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-four thousand women, signed up to take the positions of the nurses that were taking care of the soldiers. They have never been recognized. They're only--
So this is a recognition bill?
Yeah.
I will look at it, and I'm sure I'll go on it. My mother was a whack in World War II, so--
Well, it's the only group of people who have not been recognized. So that's my request for that. My question is, I just read this morning that hunger in Oregon is outrageous, and I'm wondering what is being done about that?
Well, not enough. And by the way, the Trump administration is trying to cut back on the anti-hunger programs. My own view is that the Oregon Food Bank always tells us what's going on, and I continue to see and ask about how people who used to be volunteers at the program to help hungry people now are people who need help themselves. So there are a lot of people out of work, and the jobs report yesterday was pretty good, but we also saw the day before foreign investment, and Apple, and the like. So it is a very uneven economy right now, and there are a lot of folks falling between the cracks.
All right, 199.
So if any of you, you want to know what you can do? Take a big, big batch of your canned goods and take them to the local Oregon Food Bank office. Do it now.
What can you do to stop the government?
Well, what I'm doing is I fought-- The Trump people in the farm bill fought to get restrictions in terms of who could get help, and we blocked them. And I was very much involved in that effort. Now that they lost on the farm bill, they're trying to do it administratively. So we're going to have to block them again. Good.
All right, 198 is our first one. 198. You're standing up, but you actually have a microphone. All right, I'm going to put that one aside. 179.
How about the bleachers? Anybody got a question up there?
Pretend that you're 179.
Good.
Or do 179.2.
So Senator Wyden, as much as I generally do not agree with the gentleman from Texas Politics, Senator Cruz just introduced a bill yesterday that proposes a constitutional amendment instituting term limits for two six-year terms for senators and three two-year terms for representatives. When I was sixteen, I cooked for my then-Senator Maria Cantwell. I'm thirty-one now. Given that you have been in Congress for roughly twenty years, would you be willing to support such a bill that would be a step towards freeing up Congresspeople to do a little more time legislating and serving their constituents rather than fundraising from corporations?
Let me kind of walk people through that issue, and then I'll tell you what my view is, okay? First of all, when it-- I think your last thing you said is if you have term limits, that would free up time for people to serve their constituents. Didn't I hear you say that?
Potentially. If you have-- If you're not constantly focused on the next election cycle, electing or fundraising for your election year, there's time to spend focusing on legislation with your constituents.
Right. So I mentioned that this is Town Hall meeting number nine hundred and fourteen. I think that I am the most accessible public official in the state's history, sir. I don't know of anybody who's done anything even close to this. And I'm doing it because I want to make sure, apropos of the way you closed the point, is I want people to understand what my priorities are. And my priority is to be here and listen, and give people a sense of what's going on. So that's just kind of my take. The founding fathers talked a lot about term limits, if you go back and read their writings and the like. And they decided to make the rules as we know them today, two years for the House Representatives, six years for a senator, two terms for a president, without formal term limits. And I will tell you that my own view is Western civilization is not going to end if you have term limits. But I want everybody to understand what I think is-- But I want everybody to understand what I think is really at stake here. The single biggest winners of term limits are the bureaucrats because there are no term limits on bureaucrats, folks. And they can be there for 15, 20, 25 years, and they have the expertise and they have the experience so that if Congressman X has come in and Congresswoman Y has come in, they know that that person isn't going to be around very long with the term limits. And they not only use their immediate advantage, that they have the expertise, they know that if they just look for the longer game, they're going to win. The founding fathers thought that the best term limit was this wonderful thing called an election. And if you look at the Senate, the Senate is turning over a lot. So people are kind of using their power to impose a term limit on a fair number of senators right now. And I don't think the world's going to end if you have it. But I want you to walk out of here with two points. One, apropos of the last thing you said, where you said you want elected officials to spend their time serving the people and being with the people rather than fundraising. I don't think anybody's been more accessible than I've been in the history of Oregon government, one. And I think I'm concerned, because I deal with them a lot, about bureaucrats having even more power because the bureaucrat is not somebody you, up in the bleachers up there, have much effect over. You don't like what I'm doing. You walk out of here and start all kinds of things and what a bum and what a louse and all the rest. But that bureaucrat, you're not going to have much power over. So for that reason, I have not supported term limits. And I appreciate the question. It's an important question.
You might have had a follow-up?
Of course, of course.
So to clarify--
Of course, I don't mind.
I do appreciate how accessible you are, and I'm not attacking you in any--
Right.
--or actually agreeing with you on quite a bit. But I guess my follow-up was more broadly, would you be willing to support a constitutional amendment prohibiting corporate spending on elections through PACs or any other means?
Absolutely. And that's really-- That's really what's going to level the playing field. And that's what the whole movement to overturn Citizens United is all about because Citizens United basically is saying that any limits on campaign spending violates the First Amendment. And on the individual side, you asked about the business side, and I support what you're talking about. But on the individual side, the Supreme Court, in a convoluted way, has arrived at the position where they're saying, in effect, the rich guy's checkbook is no different than the poor person shouting on the street corner. That it's all protected First Amendment speech. That is baloney. The first-- The first person, the one with the checkbook, buys a whole lot more content to talk to all these people than the person on a street corner shouting in the wind. So absolutely, number two. And let's continue the discussion. And by the way, that was a very good presentation. And I very much appreciate you bringing it up. It's an important issue and one I've thought a lot about. Okay, more in the bleachers? Try and rival that one, yeah.
Do you want to do 179.0 is ready. Maria is really excited there.
Casey, is it really 179.0? I got to tell you, there's really funny-- Casey's going to be one of those interesting people when he's at the county commission. I won't even mention his name, but I was director of the Great Panthers. And when I first got going, there was a public official who was on TV a lot. And people would call in, senior citizens especially, and they'd say, they're having problems getting their drainage situation fixed. And the politician would say, yes, ma'am. I understand that's on the corner of southeast such-and-such, four and a half inches away from the rear bivalve, and the bivalve is attached to the outer plywood foundation. And if you call 503 blah 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 blah, within 20 minutes, we'll have somebody there. And if they haven't gotten it taken care of, call 503 such-and-such-and-such. And I was convinced they made it all up. There wasn't a bit of truth in it. And this was before social media and the like, so you could never track them. And when Casey called, would you call 179.0?
Absolutely.
All right.
Exactly where it was.
We're going to be watching this guy.
Thank you, Senator Wyden, for representing us in the Senate. My question, I've talked, called your office several times. You're on the environmental panel. We have a person right now in the White House who is basically a science denier. I'm beginning to think that as long as, as well as his dad keeping him out of the military, he managed to keep him out of science classes as well. And so there's a serious threat on our environment. Just recently, the other day, I heard that there are two more killer whales in the southern pod that are malnourished. I would like to know what you can do to put a stop to the degradation that's going on in our environment. We hear, and I'm a veteran, I served in the Navy, but we hear that also the Trump administration is now allowing the Navy to conduct seismic blasts and everything that can be harmful to the whale populations. I just came back from leading, from doing a paddle trip in Maine, where originally where the right whale population is in serious threat. And whales on the West Coast face serious threats. And yet we have a, basically, a president and who seems to be dead-set on appointing people who are lobbyists for various industries. Right now, we've got, you know, thank God that Zinke's gone, but the guy that's now set to take his place is going to be just as bad. And I know he's going to be up for confirmation. So I want to know what you plan on doing to kind of style me that.
Talking about Mr. Zinke's replacement?
Pardon me?
You talking about Ryan Zinke's replacement?
Yes.
Yeah. First of all, a group of us in the Senate always joke about how if there would be one thing we could do when some of these Trump people were sleeping, what we would do is we would go and we would open their hand and we would in blue ink write in the words "science" because there's no question what you've described is right. I think a lot of it starts with our withdrawing from the 175-nation effort to deal with climate change. And talk about fake news. The comment early on was that the reason we were withdrawing from that climate change accord was that there were requirements, there were mandates that would have forced us to do X, Y, and Z. There are no mandates, folks. None, zero, nada. No mandates in that climate accord. So first thing we ought to do when we have the opportunity is get back in that climate accord and join the rest of the 175 nations to understand how serious this is. Now, the second thing I think we have to do, and I think there's an opening here, is to make the case about how climate change is going to cost us jobs. Climate change will cause jobs. If you talk to people in the private insurance business, they tell me all the time they are trying to redraw their risk assessments because all their people are telling them that they're going to face much bigger payouts if nothing is done. So this notion that climate change is going to, in some way, cost us jobs, that we got to make sure people understand if nothing is done, we are going to be hurt very, very badly economically. And you probably saw the president's own scientists about a month ago put out a report, I think it was the Friday after Thanksgiving. The idea was trying to make sure all of us were sort of recovering from too much pumpkin pie or something, that we wouldn't pay attention. It was on the front page of every paper because people understood how important it was. And third, we've got to be willing to take on big interests, which goes up to the gentleman's point there in the bleachers. I have proposed, as a senior Democrat on the tax writing committee, that the 44 provisions in the federal tax code that are for energy and are primarily gifts to the oil and the fossil fuel guys, I have proposed legislation that would throw all 44 of them in the garbage can. All 44, gone, you know. And if we did that, we would substitute for the 44.3. One would be a provision for clean energy, one would be a provision for clean transportation fuel, and one would be a provision for energy efficiency, okay? Three for 43, more green for less green. And on every factory floor in America, companies that would buy a new turbine or whatever it would be that was, for example, cleaner and more efficient than what they were using, the companies could benefit from at least two of the three tax write-offs. But we would start moving with the sense of urgency that this is really requiring. And if you really want to change behavior, you better start with the tax code, and that's what I'm doing.
Looks like you may have followed.
Yeah, sure.
I did briefly. Part of my concern is, as you're well aware, here in Oregon, we have two really key industries. We have the coastal fisheries industry, especially with crabbing. We also have a large Christmas tree industry, especially out here in Yamville. And recently, there was a news article that was done on KETU with a Christmas tree farmer out there in North Plank who said that he lost a third of his seedlings because of the high, because of the growing temperature. And we've seen what's gone on in California with the devastating fires that they've had in California. So what can be done to address the needs of financially helping these people whose livelihoods are going to be threatened by the rising climate?
I was very involved in getting the Lamont National Forest Tree as the capital Christmas tree you might have seen here just recently. And so I was out there with the Christmas tree growers. They're very serious about being supportive of climate change. But what's needed is, again, apropos of the very first question we started, of this big grassroots uprising. And I talked to them about that. And I said, look, we're going to really need you all, your business people, and most of them are pretty conservative. You're going to need to tell elected officials, whatever political party they are, that this is not Democratic or Republican stuff anymore. We're going to lose the industry. We will lose these industries. You read the report that came out that Friday? This is not like Ron Wyden just kind of waltzed in off the street and wanted to get people worked up on Friday afternoon. These are the president's scientists. We will lose these industries. Bedrock, fundamentally important industries. I stood out on the Capitol lawn when we were turning on the lights. You probably saw Paul Ryan turn on the lights. And Paul Ryan said, there's Ron with his duck hat, driving me crazy because the ducks beat Wisconsin. And I got up and said, we do a lot of things well in Oregon, but what we do best is we grow things, and we grow Christmas trees better than anybody. And then we deal with this reality of what the scientists say. So this is urgent business, and you got to tell everybody you know in the Christmas tree industry. You got to tell every single person in politics, we need your help. We cannot deny climate change and expect this industry to survive.
Can we go with 538 up on the top? You know who I'm talking about. That's right.
Thank you. Thank you very much for taking my question. My name's Maria. I work for our local soil and water conservation district. So you think that I'd be echoing what was said about climate change. I'm very concerned, but really, my concern that I wanted to bring up that hasn't really been discussed much is digital security, and I think it's actually the biggest threat to our democracy that probably we've ever seen. Misinformation, security to our elections, things we don't even know are going on. And I'm just wondering what, what's something that's going on that when you have an FCC that can't, doesn't seem to have the tools to monitor what's going on in Silicon Valley, which, you know, apparently, when you have CEOs whose mottos are move fast and break things, well, Mark Zuckerberg's breaking things. So other than, you know what you mentioned before about having a written document saying that they're not stealing our data? What kind of bill of rights for digital, for our digital rights is on the horizon? So can you speak to some of those things?
Yeah. Let me talk to you, because you're going to hear a bit more about it. Online is the entire bill that I will be proposing. In other words, I just talked about one feature, which it seemed to me was important because financial companies had to swear to tell them the truth. I think the big tech companies should as well. Probably the most important thing that's in the bill that responds to digital security is my provision, and we spell it out in great detail, welcome your input, called "do not track." And what "do not track" says is with essentially one click, you couldn't have Facebook or anybody unloading your data to Cambridge Analytica or all these places that you heard all about, or these partnerships, which I blew the whistle on, you know, as well. This has been an area I've really specialized in because I sit on the Intelligence Committee. And when I came to the Senate, I wrote some of the original laws on keeping the Internet free and open, not because I knew that much about it, because nobody had done anything about it. And the only person who knew how to use a computer was Pat Leahy. And in fact, at that time, the chairman of the major committee dealing with technology was interviewed on TV and was asked what the Internet was, and he said it's a series of tubes. And everybody started laughing. So the "do not track" provision is absolutely key to protecting people. Now, with respect to, you know, the companies, there are a few things that I thought were really critical. And I think I've got them finally to agree to change it, but I may have to just write it into law. But blatant misinformation, Facebook and people like that wouldn't deal with. In other words, there were people who would go online and say, the election is not the first week in November, the election is the day before Thanksgiving. And I said, you have got to take those down. And the second time, I asked Sheryl Sandberg in an open hearing, and it got all over the news, a week later, she'd done it. So I'm trying to use the hearings and legislation at every possible opportunity to pin this down because what Mark Zuckerberg has said, that the consumer is in control of their data. Well, I'll just tell you, you can see this online. I said, you know, he's really racking up the Pinocchios because what you see every week demonstrates that's not true. So I'm spending a lot of time on it. I hope we're going to get a serious privacy law passed before these big, and there are only four or five of them, these big, multi-billion-dollar companies basically vacuum up all your rights. And I tell you, the other thing that we're doing is we're going to say consumer privacy, individual consumer privacy is now a top-tier national security issue. And the reason why is because that's what the bad guys want all over the world. They want all your individual information because that's how they attack. And the companies under, you know, the hot lights of TV said that they would accept that. Do you want to follow it up? You can, welcome to.
I think that's great. What about some of the threats from foreign misinformation or trolls, that kind of thing? thing?
I couldn't hear the first word.
Misinformation campaigns from whether it be Russian trolls or where some of the misinformation is coming from in foreign or ordermen.
Yeah. In those kinds of cases, often, we're going to have to have the companies agree to use existing authority. Are you up on what Section 230 is? Section 230 is a law that I wrote that many people say is responsible for social media. Basically said, if you own a website or a blog, you're not going to get held personally liable for what's posted on your site. So you have some rights, but you also have some responsibilities. And that is that if you moderate content, you take down that kind of garbage, you have legal protection. And I have told the companies, and I've said it publicly, "We got you some rights, but if you're not willing to use your responsibilities as big tech companies, I guarantee you, there are going to be people coming after your rights." So this will get a lot of attention.
173. All right. And then I'm going to call out 213. That's the next one. 213? 173.
Thank you for coming, and I would appreciate it. My first time meeting is to see you. One of the concerns I have about these people and jobs again, I'm concerned that with Donald Trump, President Trump constantly fomenting, forming waters, he's in control. We're not really helping a lot of people. I know a lot of people that are out of work and they're just afraid to go even interview. And they're just, it takes a lot of courage.
They're not willing to go where?
They're afraid to go out and interview even because they get tied up. And I was struck by what they did, or tried to do anyway, in Wyoming, where they had a lot of solar panels that they wanted to put in, but they didn't have the people to help do it. And I thought to myself, "I wonder if our government is interested in doing something like a USA job loss or something that connects one area where people don't have jobs," I think of Southern Oregon down there, "to areas where people are looking for somebody to work." And I'm afraid that Donald Trump is running the show again because he's so outrageous and outlanded that he's the discussion that everything revolves around.
Yeah. Well, there is no question that the president would like to dominate every discussion. I mean, from 5:00 or 4:00 in the morning on, he's trying to define everything and block out the sun. Well, that's, again, one of the reasons why I've done so many of these meetings. In his first year in office, I held 80 of these town hall meetings, eight zero. And I did it because people were so hungry for information. And let me respond very specifically to your question. One of the big challenges in terms of the economy is the mobility question. And a lot of people, even when things are bad in place A, they don't feel comfortable moving to place B. They might not be able to sell their house, their kid had an injury, cousin, you know, George had a bout with cancer. There are a lot of reasons why it's not easy to move from A to B. I'm working on a jobs package right now, and there will be a provision in there to make it more attractive for people to be able to move if they see that kind of economic opportunity. The problem is not that they're in the jobs bus or that you can't buy people a plane ticket or a train ticket or something like that. The problem is the challenge that you have when you have people, and people really of all ages, but especially older, you know, workers who because of technological change, their job didn't exist anymore, and they had an investment in that community of 25 years, and now somebody is saying they should go to place B and make half the wage. And I think this bill is going to have a pretty good answer for it.
What I think is, I wonder about picking up people, if the government could provide a way for a person to get on a bus, for instance, and go to a job site and then come back home from that site and come home with a paycheck, maybe to a hero's welcome in the town. There needs to be a motivational piece where they are seen by everybody as courageous to go to Montana or to go up here somewhere and leave Southern Oregon and then be rewarded by it and come home with a paycheck for their friends and family or whatever, whoever the needs are. There must be a way of motivating them by asking, by not asking them to have to leave their friends and family.
Yeah. And this question of an hour away is different than, as I say, moving to another state or a thousand miles away or something like that. We're going to try to provide some incentives for both, for the people who might be looking an hour away and the people who, apropos of the very good example you gave, could really find a way to get a new skill and have some opportunities to get ahead if they felt they could deal with all of the pressures that they're already faced with right now. It's a great, it's a great question. The issue of economic mobility is one of the really untouched areas of policy, and I'm just telling you, it is not primarily kind of logistics, you know, having a plane or a bus or a ticket or something like that. It's kind of the nuts and bolts of trying, apropos of what you said, to help people get over the psychological aspect of all this. They've done something for 20 years, they've worked hard, they've played by the rules, they did everything right, and then because of the nature of changes in the economy, it wasn't there. And somebody's telling them they should go somewhere three states away and they can make half as much money? And by the way, that's one of the reasons we have so many people who find themselves in that situation depressed and part of the opioid problem and the like. Great, great point.
Okay, we have room, time for two more questions.
We're fine.
Well, I'm just talking to Fritz over here. Should you have it here? Well, let's go with 163. 163?
I guess if you're a glutton for punishment, you can go on to Sherwood, too.
All right, do we have a 163?
No, a 162.
Go ahead, right now.
And then we'll go with 213. So you have a 213? We'll go after.
Folks, Alan, can you get 162 a microphone?
My name's Joan Dratkin, and thank you very much for coming. I'm concerned about Amtrak services and accommodations and services are being eroded daily. The CEO presently serving as a CEO, was the CEO of Delta Airlines, that air carriers and big oil would like to destroy passenger rails to travel in this country. We just got off the train, and I can give you a lot of examples of that. I would like to see passenger rail travel expanded as part of a mass transportation plan using very low fossil fuels and not contributing to climate change. How can we facilitate?
Let me give you an example of how I'm trying to answer that. I was one of seven in the United States Senate who voted against the $700 billion-plus military budget. And the reason I did is not because, hang on, you guys might not agree with my reason. I did not vote against it because I don't believe it's a dangerous world, quite the opposite. I think it's a plenty dangerous world, and if you're on the Intelligence Committee, you know that. I just think that there is a lot of incredibly inefficient spending in there, spending that would be better advised for intelligence, for example, and using some of it for Amtrak. Do you know the Department of Defense is the only federal agency you can't audit? How many of you knew that? Only federal agency you cannot audit?
Why?
Because it's too big, and they've never been willing to kind of rein in the contractors and do the stuff that you do if you run a business anywhere in America. And the Department of Defense, along with Social Security and Medicare, those are the big expenditures in our, in our country. So that's why I voted against it. So a budget is really about choices, and I want us to be secure militarily in a dangerous world. And part of that is adequate intelligence, an area I think we've shorted. But a bunch of it also means you get at some of these huge weapons systems that some of them, you know, are older than your children, you know, and they're just foolish expenditures. And we'd be better to use that money to take care of education and economic mobility and improve mass transit. So I'm a very strong supporter of Amtrak. I serve on the Budget Committee in order to make a handful of investments in areas like the National Guard and Amtrak. And if you can get me some more information about where you saw problems, I'd like to have that for some of the debates. Very strong supporter of Amtrak. All right, who do we have?
213?
And who's got a burning question that hadn't, who's got a burning question that hadn't been asked?
She's been waiting.
Which one? This person right here?
So you mentioned the Oregon Way and protecting old growth and our water quality seems right in line with that. So could you talk a little bit about the Oregon Wilderness Act that you've been sponsoring and also the Land and Water Conservation Fund?
Yeah. First of all, some pretty good news. The Senate has accepted my Public Lands Bill, hundreds of miles of protection for wild and scenic rivers. It's got Devil's Staircase in Southern Oregon, beautiful, beautiful place. It's got an end to mining in the Chetco, the Frank Moore legislation in Southern Oregon, and best of all, permanent protection for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is dollar for dollar one of the best programs we've got. And here's the point, because this is a pretty resource-dependent area. There are several legs to the natural resources stool. One of them, of course, is dealing with fire. So I've spent a lot of time on ending fire borrowing, which was done this year, bipartisan basis, to get us back on prevention. The Forest Service accepted my plan to accelerate getting out the dead and dying material on the forest floor. But another part of it is protecting our treasures. And by the way, the treasures are really key to the recreation economy, which is growing, a multi-billion dollar economic engine, producing goods and services that help Oregonians. So that's a little bit of good news. And after we get the government open, and I'll say after, the Public Lands Bill will be one of the first ones voted on in the Senate.
And is Wild Rogue still?
Wild Rogue, I could not get in this proposal, but I tell you, it's in my bill, and as soon as we get this one done, I'll be back for the Wild Rogue. Count on it. Count on it. The Wild Rogue is a treasure. I will be back. Most people thought we couldn't get what we got. Yeah.
You were so close, twice.
Twice. My name is Lisa Foo. I'm a licensed acupuncturist here in McMinnville, and I'm coming to you with two questions. The first is, I have student loan debt. I started with borrowing $108,000. I've paid $75,000, and I owe $208,000. I would like to know why, since 2006, we have not gotten rid of capitalized interest, why we have not capped the interest rate on student loans. Some of my student loans are at 12%.
No.
Yes, and I can't refinance, I can't do anything. I cannot retire, I can't do anything.
Whoa, 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 timeout. What I'm going to do, this, what you've described is so outrageous. I am going to, myself, walk this all the way through the student loan system and try to make this an example of why we've got to get some changes right now. Okay? All right? Now, hold on, no, just, just, just hold on.
I'm just counting the lines.
Fritz?
Yeah.
Can you make sure you get all the information, emails, phone numbers? But, I mean, I have been looking for a couple of cases that I could walk myself through the student.
Okay, so the second issue is, I have a licensed acupuncturist. I'm here fighting for Yamhill County and access to help combat the war on opiates. We are losing in Yamhill County because right now, we have had a 65% reduction across the state of Oregon in access to non-opioid-related therapies like acupuncture, chiropractic, and physical therapy that happened in 2008. As of January 1, 2019, Yamhill County particularly lost access to all.
Hold on, you're talking, so I've got to get all the details. Are you talking about cutbacks?
Yes.
At the state level or the federal level or both?
State. I'm talking about state levels, our Oregon Health Plan, Medicaid. And I would like to stay on the front lines. I have helped many, many people get off drugs this year, and I'd like to keep it that way. And I'm passionate about this because I'm a provider. I got into this because I want to help people, but I'm also here as a taxpayer. It makes no sense to take away people's access to opiates and also take away people's access to non-opioid-related therapies. What you're doing is that you are turning good, hardworking people that are here out to the streets because it doesn't change the fact that people are in pain, and they're seeking drugs because that has been what has been offered. Then, a couple of years ago, you dangled a little carrot out there and said, "Yes, you can have access to acupuncture, chiropractic, and physical therapy," and it was working, and now it's been taken away. And I want answers as a taxpayer. This doesn't make any sense. People are going to the ERs. I have patients who stopped going to the emergency room, stopped going on drugs, stopped being part of the statistics that we keep hearing all about. So we should be increasing access to people like me and to physical therapists and chiropractors. I don't feel like acupuncture is the only thing that could be beneficial, right? So why are we decreasing by 65%, and now in Yamhill County specifically, why do we go to 0% acupuncture? This doesn't make any sense.
Let me kind of walk you through this because this is something we can work on, you know, together as a policy in addition to these student loans that you're dragging around like a wrecking ball on your back. I've been very supportive of the acupuncture field. I don't know if you know that, but I have been. And I had the only bipartisan health reform bill on the run-up to the Affordable Care Act. It's called the Healthy Americans Act. We had seven Democrats and seven Republicans as co-sponsors, and one of the best provisions that I put in myself was one that said if there was a covered service, anybody with a valid license, like an acupuncturist, could deliver the service and get reimbursed. And that was really considered by all of the alternative health field, something that would really have produced a, you know, different day. And as you can imagine, there was a lot of lobbying by the established, you know, interests and didn't end up in the Affordable Care Package. But I'm going to put it in my bills going forward because we're talking again about what to do next, and I'd like to work with you on that as somebody who's an acupuncturist. There's something else we can do right now, and that is, and why I asked you about where the cutbacks were coming from, Medicaid is a federal-state program. And Medicaid goes to the Senate Finance Committee, where I'm a senior Democrat, and I've been a very strong champion of it, particularly in alternative services under Medicaid. So let's walk through the acupuncture side of Medicaid in Oregon, because I may be able to use my leverage as the senior Democrat in the Finance Committee to create a way to get some federal leverage over the state so the state will put some money into it. Is that marginally understandable?
Absolutely.
Because it's a federal-state program, and I suspect the states kind of walk some of it back.
Well, and I think every research, every research study that's ever been known to man says that my therapy is cheaper than the drugs. It's cheaper than all of it.
You're being logical.
That's smart. Yes, I am. Try to make.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're well worth waiting for. Let me do this. I'm sure you're going to walk home, disagree with me about one thing or two things, or maybe you'll disagree with me about everything. But with all the challenges we have, I hope you'll also go home and say, "There is a reason why people all over the world want to come here, and hardly anybody from here wants to go there." And it is because even with all of the frustrations heard today, and you can take it in the meeting, much of the world, you couldn't have a town meeting like this. You couldn't have a town meeting, you certainly couldn't disagree with anybody in much of the world. So...